Good evening. Time is 7:03 on Thursday evening, the 18th. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. First thing in the agenda is the agenda changes. Are there any changes to the agenda? I actually have one. There's always one guy, and I'm him tonight. The election of new officers needs to precede the executive session in regards to the Andy King case. So...
Does it need to be mentioned that the fact-finding, and I assume the director, you are both also a second session?
We will mention that also.
Okay.
Yep, and we, for, yeah, to be as transparent as we can be, the update on the fact-finding and the update on the director's review will also be covered in the executive session. It'll cover the Andy King case with the lawyer, the update on fact-finding, and the update on director review preceded by the election of new officers.
Quick question?
Can I have a question, please, Sean?
Yes.
If I could only update on this fact-finding.
Yep.
Is there any possibility that we could do it first, and then I could ask that Sherri Hofmeyer be allowed to be in there during that fact-finding? Or do you not want to do it that way?
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I understand. That's fine.
Your question.
Okay, since you're acting as chair, is someone writing down the minutes?
I was going to ask you to do that.
Would you like me to act as such?
Since you started to, I would ask if you would.
She's really good at it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, please.
Is she good at it?
She's super good at it.
Wink, wink.
Yeah, not...
All right. Are there any further agenda changes?
Well, were we going to talk about this, we were given this, I think everyone of us has.
Yes.
It has to do with the admin duties?
Yes, we were going to talk about that when we talked about the director.
Okay.
Under new business, we'll talk about the director, and then this week, the admin person has also given notice. And for those of you, especially those that just walked in, the reason that your packets this week were fragmented is because we lost a full-time staff member, and so things didn't get out as timely as they could have been in the past. We tried as hard as we could with transparency, but unfortunately, sometimes despite your best efforts, that doesn't happen. So, that's what happened with the agenda being so late.
Can I have one thing to add?
Please, go right ahead.
On the agenda being late, the intent of the law is that we give 24 hours' notice. Somebody had to look up the law on that, and if I could, because...
Please, go right ahead.
...received a letter, and it was saying that we need to do 24 hours' notice on the agenda, and we fully intend to do that.
Yeah.
And we have in the past. But with that said, if we were to look at RCW 42.30.077, if I may, I'm just going to read the first part. Public agencies with governing bodies must make the agenda of each regular meeting as a governing body available online no later than 24 hours in advance of the published start time of the meeting. An agency subject to provisions of this section is not required to post an agenda if it does not have a website, which we do, or if it employs fewer than 10 full-time equivalent employees, which we do not. If you look up the WAC, which it is WAC 357-01-174, it describes a full-time employee who is scheduled to work 40 hours in one work week. We have six or seven, I believe.
Seven.
Seven or eight? So, we do follow up, we don't have 10. So, by the letter of the law, we did not violate the law, but I believe we fully intend to always give more than 24 hours' notice. So, thank you, Sean, for allowing me to do that.
Yeah. The intent of the district in the past has been to give a week notice on agenda and also on minutes and the budget. This did not happen this last time, and our apologies do go out to those that were affected by that. So, thank you for your patience and understanding this week. Board issues, anything for board issues?
Actually, I'll mention two things. I mean, one, and I think we all feel this way, I just, I know he's not here, but just to thank Mr. McDougall for his service to the district. I mean, I know he served, I know I don't know exactly how long, but I know he served the district for a really long time, and his service is very much appreciated. And I just feel like it's worth mentioning, even though he's no longer here. And then, secondly, I know there was a question about this, but I just wanted to mention that there is the, oh gosh, I'm going to call it the wrong thing, that effectively, the Open Public Meetings Act training that the state of Washington asks you to take, asks you by law to take if you have become a public official after, I believe it was June 1st of this year. I did complete that, and I will be following up with our folks to ask them to print a copy and just have it on hand, and I'm not asking you to do anything right now, but just because I think it's helpful for reference in these meetings, but we'll also have at some point a new commissioner coming on, and it would be great to have as reference material. It's not cumbersome, it's not too lengthy, so I think it would be great for us to have. But that was completed by me within my 90-day period, and, which actually, if anyone really needs to know, it's a section, it's a number of PowerPoint, there are different ways you can do it, PowerPoint, which for me is the easiest thing to do, so it's, you know, but it's informative.
Yes.
So, just wanted to put that out there. Absolutely.
Can you please hand Mrs. Robinson our chair's recommendation, please?
You sure?
Okay.
Any other board issues?
Well, it's not, I should have focused in on...
Cuyahoga, we did not add Cuyahoga.
No, I saw that on the list. It's on the back page.
It's under staff reports.
Cuyahoga?
Yep.
Okay, my bad.
Admin.
Nope, good point.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
You're welcome.
Any further board issues? Steve, would you do me a huge favor and please go get the public comments? Did anybody sign up for public comment?
Richard Fort.
Mr. Fort?
Yes. So, the swim team coach ultimately works for the benefit of approximately 100-plus members of the swim clubs. Why isn't the swim coach hired and employed by the swim clubs instead of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation Department? Having the swim coach as an employee of the swim teams instead of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation Department would save the taxpayers many thousands of dollars over the years in salaries, benefits, hiring expenses, and lawsuits. It also may have prevented many of the problems the pool board has faced over the past years. Anybody have a comment as to why, what structure to what it is?
You know what, I can tell you only that that's the way it has been in the past. That's never a good answer. And since I offered the answer, I'll put that in there. It's been that way since I've been here. I know it's been that way for years. There was actually a time where our swim coach was also the director. So, I don't know if revisiting how far past, you know, and we're looking pretty far past there, sir, in the past. I don't know if looking that far past where it came from or why it developed that way right now would do us any good. I think it's a valid point. I know I'm about change, and I think most of us up here are about change now, so I think, once again, that's a good point, but I couldn't answer your question, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have anything?
No, just thank you for saving your opinion. Thank you.
That's a good one.
Yes. Sorry about that. All right. Anybody else that didn't sign in? All right. Moving on to minute approval. And we get a motion.
I don't have a hyphen in my name.
You're kidding.
I'm not kidding.
All right, I did it again.
That's okay.
That's a quick and easy fix, though.
Yes, it is.
It's all the same thought this time, and it's all the same...
I know, it's lovely. It's lovely.
I know what that means.
No, it is. It's lovely.
All right, no hyphens for... By the way, can I have a motion before we talk about this, so we don't...
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting Thursday, October 23rd, 2014, as written.
I have a motion to approve the October 23rd, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
We've got a second. So, one of the things we need to change is...
I'm not in the October minutes.
Okay, good, I didn't...
Since I wasn't a member, I didn't, I read them, but I didn't see anything.
Your name isn't there.
Your day...
But there's no hyphens in the neighborhood.
No hyphens this time?
In the October.
Okay. All right, any other changes, additions, or comments?
There is the one change.
Yes.
The Chairman McDougall appoints Subcommittee Commissioner Singleton, and he's ready to stop to investigate incident and report to the board at next month's meeting.
So, we need to...
Actually, listen back to the audio.
Remove Ann Commissioner Holling, correct?
Yes.
So, the email investigation, Chair, Commissioner, and we should make that Chair, not Char. Chair, Commissioner McDougall appoints Subcommittee of Commissioner Singleton to investigate incident and report to board at next month's meeting. All right? Any further changes?
Yes.
No further changes. All right. All in favor of approving the October 23rd, 2014 regular meeting minutes as noted?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to the November 20th, 2014 special, is it a special meeting? Yes, it is. No, that should be a regular meeting, not a special meeting. Don't know why that's special meeting on the agenda. So, the 2020 minutes are the regular meeting minutes.
I move we approve the November 20th minutes.
We have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November 20th? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Changes.
Just the hyphen in my name.
Where did I put that?
It's on a suit. It's just two names.
And I did it on my special. Okay. Any further changes, additions on the November 20th? No? All in favor of approving November 20th as changed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. Special meeting minutes from Thursday, December 4th?
I move those get approved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further changes, deletions?
Just had a question, because you had it military time and civilian time, and I just think, because you had, we meeting called order at 7:00, and then 19:05 and 20:05.
I cut and pasted, yes, my bad.
So...
So, you should change 19:05 to 7:05 p.m. And 20:05 for 8:05 p.m. Any further changes? All in favor of approving as noted?
Aye.
Aye.
And the special meeting for December 10th, Wednesday?
I move that we approve the meeting, the minutes from the special meeting, Wednesday, December 10th.
Second.
Any changes or deletions?
No, there was one.
Yes.
Actually, I made the motion to adjourn there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hofmeyer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, and there's a typo, her instead of here. This one. It's her.
Satisfied. Eric questions. All right. Any further changes? All in favor as approving the December 10th special meeting minutes as changed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Voucher review, and we have with us the statements for the visa cards also. The one thing I did ask, any questions about the voucher report before I ask mine? I'm sorry. Erica, I already asked you about the porta potty. That's the porta potty up at the ball fields.
I will talk to Matt.
You're going to talk to Matt, because we really don't need to be paying for a porta potty that's not being used currently.
I would say that that's...
Or maybe it is, but probably shouldn't be used.
We all just wanted to find out.
Yes.
Get it taken care of.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good question.
And I would ask that all the board members in the public look at the pool, the natural gas heating bill, and the power bill for this month, and remember that for later in the meeting when I break the news about our energy grant.
So, you have the visa bill? Is that what they say?
Yeah, we should all have one. Did we?
No.
She's working on them. Here they come. Here they come.
So, was that a good segue, or is that pressure?
No.
No, thank you. I just took a minute to say that. Thank you.
The CPO course is the Certified Pool Operator's Course.
This isn't good.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you should bring that coach in here.
Does your coach have been working?
Maybe we should bring him in front of us. And just gauge...
I'm going to call a five-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody?
Thank you.
I just asked back five minutes, but it didn't work.
Thank you. I just remembered his picture.
I think he just kind of rationalized with why he's theater-type in the gym. I felt like I was sort of way into the table.
I just saw it, and I thought I should...
All the way from Huntingburg, Indiana. Give it a Hoosier.
Three Hoosiers in the same room. Is this a little bit happening? All right. For everybody, take a brief second to introduce our new head coach from NWA, Mr. Richard Taylor. Dick, thank you for coming.
Hey, Steve Pulp. Nice to meet you.
Dick comes to us all the way from the great Midwest. Thanks for coming out. He's been here this week, and is getting a look around the place before he returns for his household goods.
Getting moved in.
And getting moved in. We've already, he's been meeting the staff and kind of thrown under the gun in some areas, looking at stuff already and looking at the budget, so thanks for coming. Is there anything you wanted to say while you're here? You got our full and wrapped attention.
Well, I know that you're looking for a director.
We'll see.
If...
We'll see.
I have that on the letter, by the way. And if there's any interest in making those two positions again, I'd be happy to talk to you. Okay? So, there you go. Thank you.
All right.
What about your business?
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
It's a roof leak on a personal road. You were living down in Huntingburg, Indiana, is that where you were living at? Last two and a half years. Yeah? Did you ever go to the Strossen Fest? I did. There you go. I did. Jasper's a baseball town, man. How about swimming? Yes, it is.
And you'll be back on January the 2nd? I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't mean...
No, I'm sorry.
You'll be back January 2nd as the official start date, which we'll address later in the meeting, but I'm sure that question was going to come up.
Better do it part of today, so we're good.
Awesome. Fantastic.
Yay. Well, I think, and I think we look forward to having a reception of some sort with you, so just so we can, I mean, not just ask that the parents and other folks can come and meet, and talk to you, and I know I said that, but...
Okay.
Excellent.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you for coming in.
Any questions on the visa or the vouchers reports?
I'm just like, can't talk about Indiana.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just joking.
I am sorry.
I'm sorry. Are we, yeah, are we curbing yourself? Sorry, just if you would just give me a minute, I'd...
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps everyone else, too, that...
Call the meeting back to order.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you. I do need to call the meeting back to order as the recess is over. Thank you very much, Michelle. I appreciate that.
Someone has a better attention span than me, anyway.
I saw the bromine, $610.96 in the swim. I'm sure that's who we bought it for. That's obviously a pool supply for maintenance, correct? All right. Every time I see bromine, the hackles on the back of my neck go up, and I'm like...
Chlorine doesn't do really well on our hot tubs because they, it's for the hot tub.
Okay.
Chlorine doesn't do well in the hot tub because the high temperatures and the chlorine together.
Doesn't, so the high temperatures on the chlorine don't work, so we use bromine instead?
We use bromine instead, we use chlorine.
Okay. And obviously, we store the bromine and the chlorine separate, and we have the appropriate MSDSs?
Absolutely.
Okay, sorry.
You just tried to meet there for a minute. Yeah.
Yes, they are stored separately.
Thanks.
Opposite ends of the building.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Julie, for adding the carabiners.
Or is lighting actually here?
Exactly.
I knew better.
Oh.
It was one of those, yeah.
What is that?
What's the $220 aerobic class to aquatic exercise association? What is that?
Absolutely. Several months ago, the commission board approved a little bit more amount than that. I believe it was just over $400 for our head aerobics instructor to get further training for the American aquatic situation. They canceled the class. What they ended up doing was refunding us that $400, but when we had to go back and they rescheduled the class, they asked just for the teaching portion of it. They did not charge us again for the materials.
Oh, wow.
So, we actually ended up making over $200 on that because they did refund the $400 and odd dollars that we did pay for the class originally, but I did have to pay out her class fee again because it went to a different venue.
Okay.
She actually got to go down to the Newstaholz Pool.
That helps us maintain our silver shoe...
Silver, silver and fit.
Silver and fit. Thank you. I was going to say the wrong thing.
You were, but...
I said shoes.
No, I know, I know.
It's part of the...
Silver and fit.
It's part of the requirements from the Silver and Fit program that we have a certified aerobics instructor on staff, and that covers that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Affirmative revenue. Okay.
What's an EOM gift card?
Employee of the month.
And that wasn't for just one, that was for multiple, correct? That's for multiple gift cards, right? Okay. Yes, ma'am. No. Yep.
And the team unified stuff is the website, and, okay, I'm just trying to make sure that I know where it is at.
They're kind of categories.
Then that should be on here. I just like saying that.
It said zero charge at the bottom.
And I'll address it, though. Any further questions on the voucher reports or the M&amp;O account? If I can get a motion for district vouchers, 648426512 in the M&amp;O account?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve District 648436512, and let's see, M&amp;O account in the amount, you have to say the amount, okay, $41,997.03.
$41,997.03.
Yes, or the old three, sorry, point, yeah, and three cents, sorry, dollars and three cents. $41,997.03, just to be clear.
Second, Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And there's just a question, procedural question about Acting Chair, and that was done to address that. It was done during the last month when Steve stepped aside temporarily as vice-chair for the meeting. So, that is on record, so thank you for whoever asked the question. That was done, and it is a public record, so please, if you need a copy of that, and actually, I'll go ahead, no, I won't, because we're going to address that later. We'll address public records requests later if you can stick around. No? Then I'm going to, does anybody mind if I do a quick agenda change before we do staff reports?
Let's do it.
Okay. We've had an issue in the last month about public records requests, and the reason I'm going to do this is because Vicki was giving me the head nod in the back, and so I want to address this real quick. We have not been meeting the WACs and RCWs. The WACs and RCWs require us to, within five days, to give a reasonable estimation of when they will be completed. So, within five days of receiving those, we have to get that out. We haven't done that. It has to be done. In the last two weeks, as I was saying earlier, our admin assistant has quit, and I wouldn't even say has been here part-time, because it's not even that. We apologize. It is not our intent to not be transparent. Our apologies, hopefully the board doesn't mind. I apologize on behalf of the board, and we are going to move quickly to rectify that as soon as possible. We will address who's going to pick up those duties later on tonight, and so please call back tomorrow and find out where those requests are, and hopefully, we will give you an answer and get those to you in a more expedient manner. All right?
And I would like to, I mean, one of the things I would like to do, I know I talked with a couple of folks about possible process improvements, perhaps, but I'd like us to just start talking at the meetings about how many do we have open, how old are they, just until or unless they're resolved, because it certainly is not our intent to not be resolving them. And so, I'd really, I knew, I know last week we had 10 open, you know, I'd like us to start going through them, not to put an additional burden on you, but the fact is, is that we, I think we all know it's a requirement, and we all want to meet it. And so, we, until we're able to meet it the way that we're supposed to, that we should be addressing it in here. Is that fair?
Yes.
Sean, if I may? Yes, please.
On that five days, it's five business days. It excludes the first day, includes the last day. And there's a really neat, if you want to go to MRSC, they actually break public records out real well and do a very good job of addressing each issue. And for the record, it's RCW 42.56.520, which is prompt responses required. It is the law.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Staff reports, we'll go back to staff reports. Staff reports, Coach's report, we all saw the new coach. As part of that, we have here, since it's... Since it's part of the Coach's report, we do have, and the Director's report, I do have if you, if you need a copy of that, and, actually, I'll go ahead, no, I won't, because we're gonna address that later. We'll address public records requests later if you can stick around. No? Then I'm gonna, does anybody mind if I do a quick agenda change before we do staff reports?
Let's do it.
Okay, we've had an issue in the last month about public records requests and the reason I'm gonna do this is because Vicki was giving me the head nod in the back and so I wanna address this real quick. We have not been meeting the WACs and RCWs. The WACs and RCWs require us to, within five days, to give a reasonable estimation of when they will be completed. So within five days of receiving those, we have to get that out, we haven't done that, it has to be done. In the last two weeks, as I was saying earlier, our admin assistant has quit and I wouldn't even say has been here part-time because it's not even that, we apologize, it is not our intent to not be transparent, our apologies, hopefully the board doesn't mind. I apologize on behalf of the board and we are going to move quickly to rectify that as soon as possible. We will address who's going to pick up those duties later on tonight, and so please call back tomorrow and find out where those requests are and hopefully we will give you an answer and get those to you in a more expedient manner. Alright?
And, and I would like to, I mean, one of the things I would like to do, I know I talked with a couple of folks about possible process improvements perhaps, but, but I'd like us to just start talking at the meetings about how many do we have open, how old are they? Just until or unless they're resolved, because it certainly is not our intent to, to not be resolving them. And, and so I'd really, I knew, I know last week we had 10 open, you know, I'd like us to start going through them, not to put an additional burden on you, but the fact is, is that we, I think we all know it's a requirement and we all wanna meet it. And so we, until we're able to meet it the way that we're supposed to, that we should be addressing it in here. Is that fair? Great.
If I may?
Yes, please.
On that five days, it's five business days, it excludes the first day, includes the last day. And there's a really neat, if you wanna go to MRSC, they actually break public records down real well and do a very good job of addressing each issue. And for the record, it's RCW 42.56.520, which is prompt responses required. It is the law.
Are there any questions? Okay. You're welcome. Staff reports, we'll go back to staff reports. Staff reports, coaches report, we all saw the new coach. As part of that, we have here, since it's. This is part of the coaches' report, we do have, and the directors' report, I do have the contract that needs to be signed by the commissioners, I will pass that up and down right now, it was the one that was voted on last month, so if you would please. So, coaches' report, Colleen's not here. Any questions? Aerobics. I know Rika's gone for two months, two months, yeah, so she won't be back.
Can I address one NWA thing real quick?
Please, sir.
On the NWA website, I did see where they'd added Coach Taylor's little profile, that was, that's awesome. If we could remove, if we could, some of the coaches who are gone, the one that comes to my mind is Kelsey.
Both.
Both. You know, I asked, I asked for that to be removed a few months ago, but if we could, because, you know, she's a young lady, she definitely should be on there, she's not in it, so.
She's actually.
We can get that done, that would be great.
I won't bust that on you.
And I think actually, can't remember if Jared was still on there or not?
Jared is still.
Is he still a coach?
In and out as a substitute, so yeah, we'll leave him on for now, but Kelsey definitely, I'll talk to her about that.
Thank you.
Aquatics.
Actually, if we could go back, sorry, I realize there's.
No, let's go.
But the, the fitness club, I would, I, I, depending on, I know that there are some subsequent complications that may impact this, but I, I'd really like to talk us, I'd like us to have a good plan for, I, I think the fitness club is a great idea, but I'd really like to know that there's a plan and a solid plan when it starts back up. It's kind of the, I, I just like to be sure that we understand what the program is and why we expect it to succeed better than it did, than, than maybe it did at a certain time, whether it's the time of year, whether it's some other marketing, what, that, that our approach, the program itself, but I, I feel like, I feel like there maybe needs to be a little bit more, because I'd really like to ensure its success. And so, again, I think there might be more later that dictates kind of how that happens, but, does that make sense?
Um, I did talk to Coach Sanford a little bit about the fitness club and we did not have a lot of interest for the month of December due to the weather, so we decided budget saving and everything like that to go ahead and put it on hiatus because the only two or three members that were showing up on a regular basis were not going to be available during the month of December. So, one of the things that Brad and I discussed at that time was that he come with a proposal on how he would think we can move forward in a little bit different direction, a little bit more aggressive approach to recruiting people for that team. So I, I do believe he's working on it.
Okay, that would be great, I just, I wouldn't say that I think, I mean, given some discussions that happened in previous months, I don't know that I would say that I think it was, it was as successful as, one, it could be, or two, it should be as something, if we wanna, if it's something that we wanna sustain, and I'm sure there are things we can certainly try, I just, I, I don't know that I feel like two to three people is something where we can justify the cost for it, I, I know that there are other people out there, it's how do we reach them and how do we make this a successful program?
He and I had that conversation, he's gonna work on that.
Thank you so much.
If we could do one thing too, I mean, I don't know what you guys think about this, but on the, if you were to look at NWA, and we do it on water aerobics also, it's a little, little harder on water aerobics, I think to break the numbers down, but when you look at NWA, you know, I understand what we're doing, we show how many visits in a month, but I, I like it better, or I personally, I don't know how you all feel about that, it'd be nice to see the numbers, so we can see them go up hopefully over the next few months. And so where you can just look at it and say, okay, there's this many kids in, from all the way through senior, and we can actually see the, you know, the growth that we hopefully will see over the next few months, so. Don't you guys, do any of you agree with that?
I agree.
I, I think that's great because I know, even here, it says we've increased with three new swimmers and one new master swimmer, did we not lose anyone, or are we really saying that the delta is up three? I don't know, I don't know, that would be great to see, I think, I think it's a good point.
I, I'd like to, actually, it'd be nice to see both because at the same time, because I think that you would agree with this, when you really look at the growth of the swim team, you know, it's going to be if they're here on Saturday mornings.
That's correct.
You know, and that is going to be the, right, and that was the one that, when it was exploding here, it was, you know, kids would, would, uh, not sleep in, they would be here to swim instead, so you'd begin to see that, and maybe they, together, we can see this overall health, so. Thank you.
Anything for aquatics here?
One, the one, one thing I will bring up with aquatics is the Island County Health Department. So the Island County Health Department did come in and they, they went over us with a fine tooth comb, they did everything from the chemicals to, basically, they walked up into my office and they pulled all of my lifeguarding certifications for my entire staff to make sure that we are all still current, yes, they are able to do that. They did not find one thing wrong in this entire facility, all the certifications were up to date, the water was great, they went back several months on our readings, our chemical readings, they were right where they needed to be, so major kudos for them.
And when he's doing that without the assistance of a computer program and actually, that's pretty amazing.
It's pretty amazing.
That is.
He's doing, he, he's doing a really good job about keeping our chemicals right where they need to be and it was a really, really good boost for us to just.
Good there.
Not, not one hit.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Any idea what, I know he's not here, but what has been done on the dog park and the ball field?
I do know that they did remove some debris and there was an unbelievable amount of trash.
We may need to look at chaining that up. Put in a chain across the driveway like we've done in the past.
For the, for the ball field or for?
For, yeah, it's, to, there's a chain that goes, so people can drive up and use the dog field.
Right.
And then there's a chain behind that, because otherwise, and even, it's horrible to say this, because if you go between, you know, ball field and the dog field, dog park, there's still places where people can go and park and last year we had people dumping mattresses and all kinds of wonderful.
We did that again.
How, oh, we, so we had another dump run, okay.
How, how much does a park get used a lot, do we?
On the summer.
A lot. Oh, absolutely.
Well, just have.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, it does, absolutely, I, I wasn't even fence, oh, I'm, I'm a user, user.
I went up there one, I went up there one day during the summer and there were 42 dogs. All getting along or?
It's like a dog pantry dish.
Yeah, and they, and, and the people who go there take a lot of pride in the place, they really do. People who use it.
That's a snarky comment.
No, it's true, no, I, that was not.
I was talking about. Snarky. No, it's true.
Nice total attendance numbers for the month, 4,313 of our taxpayers were able to utilize the pool in various capacities, I like to see the disabled vets up there with 68, that's good after those gentlemen came and had so much emphasis here. That was awesome, that was really good.
Thank you again for these, I liked this, this is very nice to listen to. And Joanne, if you had anything to do with it, you, you probably do. Thank you.
Staff reports, okay. Any other questions on the staff reports? Awesome. Moving on along, for unfinished business, the agenda change is the election of new officers, we have to, it's December, it's that time of year again, yay. We elect our new officers for 2015 and then it happens this month. So, we have to elect a chair, vice chair, and a secretary.
Well, I would like to start it off by nominating Mr. Sean Merrill to be the chairperson.
Second.
Discussion.
Not so much.
It's with the most, with great respect and love, Sean.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carefully don't get nominated secretary.
Unfortunately, I can't make a motion. So now I sit here and say, do we have anything for vice chair?
I would like to make a motion that Ms. Donna Sue Polly be the secretary.
No, I thought we were talking about, I would love to be the assistant chair or whatever it is.
The vice chair?
I'd like to wanna be the secretary.
I think that's going off.
You have a second? Do you have a second?
We have a motion for Donna Sue as the secretary?
Yes.
Alright, do I have a second? Second. We have a second, discussion.
I don't really want to be the secretary, does that matter?
Not really.
You, you can vote against.
What she said.
You so suck.
Really? You were just about to throw me under the wheels.
Any further discussion, hey, this is not supposed to be this much fun. Any further discussion before Donna Sue kicks and screams her way out the door tonight?
I'll get you.
Alright, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Oppose the.
Passes two to one.
We love you and you take good notes.
Sean, I would like to make a motion. Wendy Singleton is the vice chair.
We have a motion.
Second.
For vice chair for Wendy, we have a second discussion.
You're around, you're around, is RCW still here?
Nope.
In my spare time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Voted for, too bad. Alright, now, we, unfortunately, we do have to take an executive session, this is gonna cause a, a break of about 30 to 40 minutes, depending on, actually, I have to give you a timeframe, we have to call the lawyer, so, it is 7:42-ish?
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
One thing we did last time that we will try not to do this time is that we let people hang, when we said 15 minutes, we didn't come back.
Oh, and we update.
We will come back if we know we're going to go over, so you're not sitting here for an hour wondering, did they die? So, so anyway, we will, we will come back.
So, good point, we will, we will give you updates.
Yes.
If we go over 30 minutes. So, I'm gonna call an executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the legal actions for the Annie Keane case, the update on the fact finding investigation, and the director's review.
For any, how many minutes did you say, sorry?
30.